To our city council meeting, this August 21st at 5:30 ish PM. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Bozen.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Here.
Mr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Greider.
Here.
Ms. Wilder.
Here.
And Mr. Foyes.
Here.
All right, thank you. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? All right, please join me in the pledge led once again by Kelly Felkley, City Clerk.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for approval of the agenda as proposed, as well as the approval of minutes from the July 31st, 2023 council planning session as proposed, and the approval of the minutes of the August 7th, 2023 council regular session as proposed.
Second.
Mr. Mayor.
That motion has been made with a second.
I would like to offer an amendment to move ordinance item number two to just after public comments on the consent agenda.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, so to move those items, move that item around up towards the front, we'll take a roll call, an electronic vote to move that.
Can I do it by voice?
It can be a roll call, it could be a voice.
I'll read it.
Roll call vote, Kelly will read it.
Mr. Bozen.
No.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
And Mr. Foyes.
Yes.
All right, so the item moved up front.
And we need a vote on the.
And we had a vote on the agenda.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, we have an amended agenda. First item up today is public comments, so please, if you have non-agenda related items, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Mary Potter, I'm the trustee at Grouse Museum.
Thoughts, Ms. Mary.
Pardon me?
Now, go ahead.
What did he say? I said, "I'm Mary Potter, trustee of Grouse Museum, and my office is at 1416 West Fourth Street, and I am here to offer some positive things tonight so that all the negatives can come after me, okay? What I want you to know is the Grouse Museum is a very special thing in Waterloo, as we've discussed before, and I want to talk specifically about a special thing that we're going to have, which is the Dry Run Sewer Banquet." And I'm going to read to you a little, we're doing this as 120th anniversary. It says, "The then newly-built Dry Run Sewer served as a banquet hall in October of 1903. In the underground chamber, 450 guests, the women in high heels and richly embroidered gowns filed down a ready-made stairway in a block-long section of the sewer between Wellington and Randolph Street. Many of the guests were representatives of the state of Iowa or city officials who were holding a convention in Waterloo. The $100,000 sewer project, don't you wish, provided an underground conduit between the Marsh and the Cedar River." Now, this was decided that this is really a point in Waterloo's history that may not be in everybody's history, and so if you have read the book that talks about the things in Iowa, you will find a picture of that, and it shows the tables all in white, it shows the candelabra, it shows the linens, all this, it's a very special time. And unlike what somebody asked me last week, this will not be held in the sewer again, but it will be held at the Grouse Museum, and it is a special fundraiser for the Grouse. The Grouse is one of our very best things in Waterloo, and I think we really need to celebrate it more. I think we need to have more participation, both in the way people come to it and monetarily. So, being this is a fundraiser, I would really hope that some of you would find that you would like to come to it, we're already about half sold out, but we can make room for you. We have a few celebrity waiters, Mayor Hart never returned my call, so I'm not sure he is going to be.
You and I, we didn't talk on the phone or meet?
Huh?
You and I haven't talked about this?
No.
Never?
I mentioned it at the last council meeting. Anyway, Rob Nichols did say yes.
Good for Rob.
And so did Tara Thomas. So, we do have a few that have joined on. We're going to be celebrating this, and we will be doing the same course meal as they had, probably not the same things, because I think some of them you would find not so good. But Paco's is going to be the people who cater it, I think it's going to be a fun event. If you want any more questions or answers about it, give me a call or call the Grouse Museum, and they'll be happy to share it with you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Rob. And I'm pretty sure that invite is extended to all council members and the mayor as well, so, thank you, Ms. Mary. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Todd Obadall, 124 Amity Drive. I'm here to talk about the transparency of the city and the conduct of this council, specifically in regards to the special session that took place a week ago. There was many people that didn't know that there was a special session going on. The news media reported that the meeting was announced at 4:59 PM on Friday, it was not published in a newspaper of record, and that the public posting was in a building that is closed for business Saturday and Sunday, which makes the meeting that was scheduled at 4:30, very different from usual times, the meeting that was scheduled at 4:30, there was not 24 hours of business notice available at the point of public notice for the public. I would ask, and any member of the council or mayor could ask for the city attorney's opinion on whether or not proper notice was given for this special meeting and the vote on an ordinance that was, that took place at that time. It is very important that the public be aware of what is going on in city business. City council members made the public very aware when this ordinance was passed, but somehow it became very hush-hush when the repeal happened, and somehow we went from a 6-1 vote for the ordinance to a 4-3 vote to repeal the ordinance. The constituents of this community have a right to know why their members changed their votes, specifically the people that supported and cheered the signing of this ordinance into, into effect. I would ask that the council, ask the city attorney, whether or not proper notice was given, and whether or not this repeal needs to be started again. There is plenty of liability that could occur if we are not following the rules, and that is not just city liability, it is also personal liability. With that, I'll pass, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on non-council agenda items?
Beverly Cosby, 315 Wendell Court, Waterloo, Iowa. First of all, I'm coming, I have a question, and before I do that, I'd like to applaud the Walnut Court area for all the upbuilding that's been done over there, and the fact that you're putting in new houses and building up, like I said, building up the community. I know that there was money that was funded into that neighborhood to do that, so my question is, and I applaud the Habitat for Humanity for putting up those houses, but my question is, how close are we getting to going across the tracks and making those houses and those same advantages made available for the people in Smoky Row? Now, some of you don't know what I mean when I say Smoky Row, and some of you do, but that also can be designated as a historical area, and funds can also be funded into that area to build homes for deserving residents of Waterloo. So, my question is, is there a project, is there anything going on to help infuse housing into the Smoky Row area, does he having it designated as a historical area of Waterloo?
Ms. Cosby, I don't know the answer to that, but I will share that with the mayor and have him give back to you, okay? Okay, appreciate that, thank you.
My name's Dwayne Ayers, I live at 1205 Bishop Street. Back here the third week for the same thing, they issued me a ticket because I had my vines too close to the sidewalk, and yet, two doors away, the city owns the property, which I brought up each time, and the mayor quickly scratched something down, which probably went in a garbage can, because the weeds are now two feet higher than my head on the city sidewalk. Supposed to be done by the code enforcement to have the city do something, they're actually disgracing the neighborhood, and they're right next to Veredian Bank on all three sides of the building, yet they run my property down three doors away, saying my vines are too close to the sidewalk. They don't do nothing, it's the same old story, it's the same old lie that the city gives on, "You better do what I tell you, otherwise, we're going to take you to court and fine you." But they don't do nothing, they let the neighborhood go to hell, because the two other neighbors on the other end had weeds higher than this high. Finally, they got a notice to trim up, but the city didn't do nothing, and they disgraced the neighborhood. If they think my vines on the fence is too close, there are weeds that are eight feet high, run down the neighborhood. The mayor promised something was going to be done, going to refer to code enforcement, something was going to be done, nothing's been done. The same way with two other properties I have that are adjoining, the same way with the property on the end of Columbia Street, I finally hired five people last week to go out and rake it, and we picked up a bushel basket full of iron, nails, trash, garbage, and the two sides, the property to the road don't belong to me, and the weeds are this high. My road goes to my property dead end, nothing's being done, ain't been done for 10 months, it took 10 months to get the city to finally haul the guy away from there, didn't haul away 10 junk cars, but when I had a semi there on that same spot, code enforcement tagged it Friday at 4 o'clock and towed it Monday morning at 9 o'clock, but all that junk they had stayed there for 10 months, I can't use my property. Now, we can finally use my property, after I hired five people to come out and do the city's job.
Anyone else that would like to address the council and mayor on non-agenda related items?
Karen Johnson, Zachary Court, Waterloo. Just a couple requests for update on status of things. I haven't heard anything recently about the status of the new grocery store that's going in over by the Salvation Army, and it's been many years running that we were supposed to have a store there, and it still isn't open. And the other thing I was just wondering, just coming through downtown this evening, I was noticing all the cameras on each of the corners in downtown Waterloo, and I was wondering if the, if there had been public announcements of that, and what they're for, and where the money came for from them, and all that, thank you.
With regards to the grocery store, I don't know, Ms. Johnson, have you had a chance to drive by it? Have you driven by it in a little while? Yeah, it's, it looks like it's almost close to completion, so I think everybody will be glad, especially the owners. You have comments on the cameras, chief?
Well, the purchase of the cameras came before the council, I don't remember exactly when, we're just making the downtown area more conducive to what other entertainment districts throughout the city and, or throughout the state and the country are like, better surveillance, better visualization, visualization in case something happens.
Do we already have, there's other cameras though, bin cameras downtown?
Yeah, the intersection cameras have always been there, we're just expanding that program throughout the downtown area right now.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on non-agenda related items?
I'm Michael Blackwell. I live at 5125 Millennium Drive in Cedar Falls. Many can imagine the period of overt racial discrimination and exploitation in this country prior to the civil rights movement in the second half of the 20th century. Were there a 24/7 Wall Street report back then, it would have been futile to delineate the worst places for black Americans to live, because there would have been so many to enumerate and rank. What is disturbing is that stark racial disparities still exist regarding all the factors that comprise the Quality of Life Index. The multiple and cumulative effects over time, coupled with the more subtle and covert institutional racism today, maintain a system that marginalizes people of color, both consciously and unwittingly. Such structural racism is business as usual, and many merely accept it as the status quo and simply expect it. So, when cities in Iowa are researched and the worst places for blacks to live in the country, we seem to acknowledge it, shrug our shoulders, and then go about our day without seeking assiduously to develop policies, tax, task forces, and penalties, and to locate resources to eradicate the perennial problems that keep us on these lists. Our statewide elected officials ought to be embarrassed and challenged by the data and statistics that place us on these lists. They should be more concerned about Waterloo-Cedar Falls, Des Moines-West Des Moines, and Davenport-Moline Rock Island than profiling at the Mexican-US border when these metro areas are in dire straits. Recently, on a list of the most miserable city in each of the 50 states, Waterloo was named for the state of Iowa. In total, Waterloo was ranked 38 among the 50 most miserable places. Addressing and redressing the issues plaguing the inhabitants of Waterloo should be our utmost priority, otherwise, we are guilty of neglect. We need to work with Cedar Falls, as well as demand from our county and state officials to attend to these urgent matters as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else that would like to address the council on non-agenda related items? Going a second time. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the public comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public comments closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of 1A1 Bill's payment for August 14th, 2023, in the amount of $3,487,529.98, and for August 21st, 2023, in the amount of $2,267,650.65.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. That is an electronic vote, please cast your vote.
What's your vote then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All right, so that passed unanimously, the consent agenda. Just to mention, mention a couple items, Eric Donat has been a new appointment to our Human Rights Commission, so I see Eric back there, and also Christian Safer, new addition to our Planning and Programming, Program, Zoning Commission, so we want to thank both of you so much for volunteering to step up, and Eric, I know you, you've been a faithful member to attendance as well, so we want to thank you very much for your willingness to serve, so thank you. All right, and we have a motion approving the appointment of William Castle to the position of Assistant City Engineer in the Engineering Department, and also the appointment of Ron Bailey from the Civil Service List to the position of Mechanic in the Central Garage, pending a pre-employment physical and testing, and then, last but definitely not least, Mohammed Elaiha, Elahi? That's what I said. To, from Inter, Interim Traffic Operations Director to the position of Traffic Operations Director in our Public Works Traffic Department, so to the three of you, I just want to say congratulations, I think Mohammed, you have been here, and Mr. Castle has as well, and to our new appointment, Ron Bailey, we thank you so much for stepping up to be part of our city family, so congratulations. All right, if someone would so graciously take number one. Anyone?
We're going to do.
Oops.
The ordinance first.
Oh, okay, so not, number one is not number two, number two is, all right?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive file, considering passed for the second time, an ordinance omitting the City of Waterloo Code of Ordinances by repealing Article C, unfair practices, conversion therapy of Chapter 3, Human Rights Title V Police Regulations.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Oops, I'm sorry. Oh, I was going to open the public hearing, oops. All right, well, let's, 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 let's go back, so just do the, so scratch that, do the motion to file and consider.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to receive file, considering passed for the second time, an ordinance omitting the City of Waterloo Code of Ordinances by repealing Article C, unfair practices, conversion therapy of Chapter 3, Human Rights Title V Police Regulations.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Now, we will take public comments, please come up, state your name and address for the record, and let us know your thoughts. And so what we, what we did at the beginning of the meeting, there was an amendment to move the conversion therapy ordinance to the first part of our meeting, so we're taking that now, and that was voted on, so, sir?
Hey.
Yes, sir.
Honorable Mayor, distinguished people of the council, my name is Chad Mohammed, LMSW, I am a business owner here in Waterloo, I'm also a licensed therapist. I had to take some time off, which is extremely important, there's a high need in this community, especially for folks of the queer community and trans children to receive proper care and high-quality therapy, because there's something very troubling happening, and that is something that should be common sense, something that should have been made maybe years and years ago, is the idea that we do not force therapy on a person that does not want to accept it. There's also the idea of terrorizing our youth at a time when we are having historic attacks on human rights, on the dignity and respect of our people. But more importantly than that, this message isn't going to be for your ears, this is actually for our people in the community, and that is, we understand that there is a war happening in this country, and that is to keep dreams from happening, from keeping our trans and queer population from believing that they will make it to the age of 20 and beyond. We understand that being queer or trans or non-binary is not a mental health issue, the mental health issue stems from the oppression of your identity. But here's the thing, we are actually winning, and we're building power. And power is defined as the ability to act. And in one way that we're doing that is, we are uniting every single queer, trans, non-binary person in this state, we are finding them where they are isolated, whether it's the most rural of counties or the most populous, and we're doing something kind of fun, we're playing Dozens and Dragons. There's a website up, it's called www questingqueers.com. It's a good time, we're having a blast, the first session is going to be September 6th at 6:30 PM at the Cedar Falls Public Library. And just know that while we are having campaigns of fantasy and play, these campaigns will be translated to be running very real campaigns for every single elected position in this state and beyond, and we will not stop until we have majority power, and so that we can withstand this terrorist attack from the Liberty Council, from which I have survived, my city, I come from Seattle, withstood this, and we won, we fought back. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Autumn Stowe, I'm a licensed master social worker.
My name is Autumn Stowe. I'm a licensed master social worker, and I work locally in nonprofit development. I'd like to invite you all to reflect that you opened this meeting by touching on individuals joining the Human Rights Commission locally here and advocating on behalf of our community, and then swiftly moved into an attack on the rights of queer people living here locally.
Karen Johnson, Zachary Court, Waterloo. I have no prepared thoughts. My just, my immediate reaction is, nobody's in a power struggle. Everyone wants everyone to live their life the way they want to live it, but no one wants another person's opinion pushed on them to the point where they can't live their own life. And the word "power struggle", I'm not in a power struggle. I want parents to be able to do and care for and raise and nurture their children within their family the way they want their family to be nurtured and raised. Now, when those young people get out and are old enough to make their own decisions as a majority, then that's their individual right to do so. But young people need guidance, they need direction, and they get that from their families and their cohesive individual units at home. And that's where the power, if there's any power, should be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Emily Hollingsworth, 5737 Folk Road, Waterloo. I'm speaking tonight to urge the council not to repeal the ordinance providing assistance to victims of conversion therapy. At this time, the council has not explained why they are considering repealing this ordinance in the absence of any mandate to do so. But I believe it is safe to presume that this council fears a lawsuit based on comments made by the council when passing it. The city of Waterloo has paid out millions of dollars to settle police misconduct lawsuits. The city has been sued due to actions taken by the Engineering Department, by the Human Resources Department, and the council itself. Should these institutions be disbanded because of the fear of lawsuits? Of course not. That would be absurd, despite the chances, in fact, the likelihood of further legal action. The city recognizes that these institutions work to keep us safe. In each of these cases, the city also fought the lawsuit because the city believed they had acted in the right. This ordinance, this ordinance was simultaneously the very least and the very most that this council could do under current law to protect members of our community. Now, less than four months later, the council wants to repeal even that small measure of safety. Despite the comments of several council members in support of this ordinance, they are now considering repealing it. Their conviction barely lasted a season. As an institution, this council has the responsibility and the power to create the safest possible city for as many residents as possible. If the council backs down from this ordinance now, they are sending a message to vulnerable members of this community that they are not important enough to fight for, and that their safety is not necessary to this community. Please vote not to repeal this ordinance.
David Dryer, 3145 West Forest Street, Mayor and Counsel. My question is a parent's responsibility for the actions of their child until age 18. Is that correct? I think so, according to state law. Being the case, then why is anyone other than the parent trying to determine the future, much less their gender? So please take this ordinance off and stay out of the parent's rights. Thank you.
Tad Obral, 124 Amity Drive. I guess nobody thought the idea of notice was, wasn't important enough to ask for the city attorney's opinion. Multiple times I came up to this podium during the discussion on this ordinance, and either taking a side for or against it, I asked for the opinion of the city attorney on the legality of this. One time I was told that an opinion had already been given, and that was prior to a Supreme Court case that had come down in March, which kind of changed the playing field on this. No member of this, of this body asked for the public opinion of the city attorney. Yet somehow, it's all of a sudden, in, behind closed doors, we have a change of heart of three of the people on the legality of this. There was a executive session that was, that was held, that was, that was held presumably to discuss this. There was some impending, some pending litigation. If their executive session was held on this matter, I offered that it was a completely inappropriate executive session because the city had no liability whatsoever. The city does not have, the city will not pay out for inappropriate laws, for damages from the inappropriate laws. The city attorney is responsible for making sure that the laws comport with state law, constitutional laws, and the city attorney puts his reputation and his opinion and his bond on the line for that. In the absence of asking for the city attorney's opinion, then it is the members of the council that put their bond and put their, and put their treasure on the line. So any lawsuit that comes in about this ordinance, be, be clear about this. It is not because the city would be liable, it is because the council members who voted for it and the executive that signed it into, into law would be liable for that. Now, if we had an executive session to protect the personal interests of city council members, that would not fall under the state guidelines for what an, an executive session kept in secret is for. So I stand here and I ask directly, and I, I will stand here waiting for the opinion. I want, I would like to hear the, the city attorney state that, one, there is no liability for our city council members based on the passage of, of this ordinance, and, two, that there was no discussion of crafting a repeal to the ordinance in executive session in order to remedy the situation. Any crafting, any discussions about repealing this ordinance needs to happen in public, not in executive session. An executive session is called for one reason, one reason only. It was not noted that it was for pending legislation, for changes to the ordinance. It was for a legal matter in which the city would be liable. I would like to hear if that was the case.
The executive session that was held a few weeks ago was done under the litigation clause.
Is that the opinion of the city attorney?
That's fact. That's what was read at the meeting.
With all due respect, Mr. Mayor, your opinion does not have legal sway. The city's, city attorney's opinion does. And it's this council that hires the city attorney, and it is their interest that he looks out for.
So I think, I think, even if the city attorney gave an opinion, it's still council's decision whether or not they want to move forward on a particular item or not. What I will do is you take your seat. Mr., Mr. Peterson, the day we had the executive session, what the, the closed session, what were the parameters of that closed session that was listed on our council agenda?
Martin Peterson, Legal Department. The code allows for a closed session in instances where the council needs to discuss pending or threatened litigation.
Thank you. Right. Next.
Forest Illavoo, 1725 Huntington Road. Mind concerns the people not knowing of the first meeting. Did it not be televised on the normal channel where city council meetings are held? I received several calls asking, "Did you have the meeting?", because they tuned in wanting to see it. Also, no one has been told officially why we are repealing this ordinance. I feel the citizens of Waterloo, who pay all of your salaries, who pay for all of the city attorney, everybody sitting up there is paid by the citizens. I believe the citizens should know the reason so that they can decide whether you're voting in their behalf or your own behalf. You know, I, we all assume that it's a legal action, but it may not be. It may be somebody passed out checks or, or green stamped books to those of you setting up their voting. Nobody knows for sure. We're all in doubt. I think the citizens have a right to know, and they should know before you take your vote tonight, and I thank you much.
Thank you. As Mr. Peterson indicated, there was closed session with regards to litigation or a threat thereof, as he just stated for the record, and I stated twice. Yes, sir.
Michael Haynes, 2178 Grand Boulevard. I wasn't planning to speak tonight, so I didn't have a chance to collect my thoughts at all. But I've heard a lot of people talking tonight about parents' rights, which is honestly appalling to me, that we're not also talking about children's rights not to be subjected to harmful and pseudo-scientific conversion practices. I'm talking about things like electroshock therapy. I'm talking about things like... That's besides the point. The point is that conversion therapy does not work, is traumatizing to people who it is, who are subjected to it. And of course it should be banned. That's not even something that should be considered. It is harmful in every possible way, and it needs to be banned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Archer Tripp, Cedar Falls citizen. I am here today to kind of echo that point because I am a survivor of conversion therapy. I know a lot of you may not have seen a person in person, but I am a survivor, and conversion therapy did not work on me. I was in high school when I was put into conversion therapy by my parents, and there were five of us that were assumed to be queer in some way, shape, or other, so we were put into conversion therapy. For a year, I was put into that with other, five other kids, and I was the oldest. And that is why I'm here before you today, because I feel it is my duty on behalf of them, but on behalf of everyone who has ever been under any sort of city that thinks that conversion therapy is somehow okay to have legalized, that is not the case. I am here, and it does not work. Now, I am a proud queer man, but I am also here to protect everyone else. I am in high school, I was in high school, and so it was my parents that did this. Again, we should protect our children. I think that is why we are all here today, to protect our children, and we should protect our citizens, our families, our children, because they grow up to be our citizens. Therefore, I think there should be no reason to fear homophobia or the threat of losing money, but instead, we should protect our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Aliyah Ramon, and I live on Southbrook Drive. I'm a pretty boring queer person who works as a software engineer and cares for a child with my partner. I want to thank the members of council who voted against the repeal last week, and I would thank you for your courage by name if rules allowed that, but I see you. I understand from news reports that those who voted for the repeal are concerned about potential legality and financial burden. But if that is the case, I don't understand why we haven't already put in motion alternative city-level measures for impacted youth, given the escalated attacks on queer and trans people in this state. Equity should not be abandoned to the county to handle, especially if that path isn't confirmed. It should be protected at all levels of government. Without layered protections, the sizable financial burden of a discriminatory environment is passed on to citizens and governments in the form of healthcare, legal, travel, security, moving, childcare, unemployment, and other major costs. What I'm saying is that this legal cost we might encounter once is not as much of a financial burden as the inequality we definitely have year after year. I now have people in my life repeating homophobic and racist language to question whether I'm a danger to the child I care for. I have to use personnel and public resources to deal with those attacks. This ban did not divide us. Discrimination is what has always divided us, and the ban simply shed light on it for those not in the know and offered a way to reduce its costs. It really saddens me that we want to do something as expensive as allowing conversion therapy. Young queer and trans people who are watching, you deserve to grow up without being told that you're defective. Our way of life deserves to be protected because it is simply based on this belief. The ability to love, grow to adulthood, contribute to an equitable society, and build a family should not depend on a single acceptable option for the genders or race of the people in that family. That's it. That's it. The goal of the conversion therapy movement, on the other hand, is to prevent LGBTQ youth from becoming LGBTQ adults, period. And so it is a costly attempt to exterminate our culture. If you oppose policy protections for LGBT people but say you love us, I can only believe you when I see you take any action within equity efforts led by queer and trans people. Until then, I ask that you devote your time to something less financially burdensome and let us reach adulthood as the people your God made us to be. State code may not require the city to tell us where this repeal came from, but all you have to do is study the recent history of failed lawsuits against these bans to know that we're now almost certainly allowing moneyed interests from outside Iowa, people who parent no Iowan kids, to force us to retreat from our convictions and a democratic vote to protect our community. I feel for the councilwoman faced with this threat to local governance, and I'm willing to fight if you are. Please be a dissenting voice on the repeal today, or show us what you've already introduced as an alternative to kind of the cost of bigotry. Thank you, and happy Pride Fest this weekend.
My name is Summer Elliott, and I am a private practice owner therapist here in Waterloo, and I'm also a parent. And number one, I, when I think about what I did to become a therapist, I had to, the state of Iowa says, I need to find a program that is what is called K-CREP accredited. In, in that accreditation, I need to make sure that conversion therapy is not a part of it. And then I have to take state boards. State of Iowa says conversion therapy, under my state exam, is, is not, not ethical. The AMFT, as I'm a marriage and family therapist, says conversion therapy isn't ethical because it is harmful, hurtful, demoralizing. We know the history. You guys know the history of this. So, so this comes about of, the conclusion we draw is the lawsuit. And so the fear I see in people that are reacting out of a sense of fear is... Well, it's disgusting, right? And so I think our plan is, is we are gonna join together, we're going to build community, we're gonna find support from each other, and then when we see your names, people that decide we're gonna repeal this ban, we'll make this decision of, we're gonna replace you, you know? And so I think that as we start to build community, as we start to gather together, these worries that we have about what conversion therapy can do with this harmful, hateful legislation that the state of Iowa has passed on our trans kids, is it won't affect us. It won't get to us because we will have each other. So I hope that you join us with the Questing Queers, the LGBTQ Coalition. We have things going on that if your reaction is out of fear, that we can stand together. The second thing is, is I have been doing a lot of reading lately and listening, and I have read some things from Bell Hooks, who says, "Community is resistance. Resistance is community." And that, that's our plan for right now. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hello, council members. I'm Sam Blatt. Live on Lafayette Street here in Waterloo. I'm gonna echo the others who are fighting for the LGBTQ community, and I appreciate those who are, have been in support and who are most recently in support of not repealing this ban. And I wish that this was an opportunity that we could have acted sooner and more proactively rather than now retroactively. There was a lot of time that we stood by to wait for this plan to come, come into place, and lawyers were consulted, and I know that there was hesitance with some of y'all to vote in the beginning because of this legality issue, but you stood by it, so where is the follow-through now? What's the new, new solution for this, and how will you continue to support the LGBT community and their safety without proper action? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nick Tripp. I'm just here to say that the duty of the city is to protect our children and to ensure respect and safety. respect and safety. Repealing this ban on conversion therapy showcases a washing of hands regarding the constituents of this city under the age of 18. Repealing this ban on conversion therapy shows a passive seat when it comes to the safety of your constituents. Regardless of the worry of hypothetical lawsuits, what matters here is the present and what is presently happening to what is happening in your city and to whom it is happening. The safety and accountability of the care of our children is at the forefront of all of our minds, as we can all agree with. We care about our children. Unfortunately, not all parents always make the safest decision for their children. What is the line of what is okay to do to our children? What do we think it is? If parents would like to physically harm their children, does the council also allow this? This is what conversion therapy is, harming children. I ask then, oh, excuse me, got my copy pasted wrong. I am someone who has been in conversion therapy, if you notice, I have a twin. I used to tell that as a joke, a little bit, as a like, hey, guys, this still happens now, and a lot of people didn't believe me. In classes, I kind of use it as a like, yeah, this still happens. And now I can't do that anymore, which kind of bums me out because it used to be a showstopper, and I guess now it's a little bit more normalized, which is really not great. So, I also say that a lot of people within your midst, you never know who have been through conversion therapy, because a lot of us, you can't tell because we just moved on. But with that, I want you to challenge your perspectives of what conversion therapy is. If you were a child, let's imagine that the world was a completely different place, and your parents said, "I don't want you to be straight and heterosexual. You're going to therapy." How would that feel for you? How would it feel if it was your child that, that you wanted into therapy to not be straight anymore? It doesn't feel great. We're not so different. We want to protect our children. Not repealing this ban just showcases that you don't care about all of your citizens. Thank you.
Right, is there anyone else that would like to comment? Please come forward.
Hi there, Melissa Hind, Waterloo, citizen. I don't want to give my address. I was going to say a few words about somebody who was talking about freedom during the walk for Washington on Saturday, and he talked about freedoms, but he talked about his freedoms. He didn't talk about everybody's freedoms because he's talked against the LGBTQ. And it has to be for everybody. When you look at the Constitution, "we the people" means everybody. That means protection. That means encouragement. That means education. I'm really worried about the council and some of the things that may be worrying you. You may be worried about losing your homes, losing your jobs, losing your friendships. A lot of the kids that are LGBTQ have had same fears, that they'll be kicked out, that they'll lose their support systems. And one of the things that they should not ever lose is their ability to be themselves, whether we agree with it or not, and that's something that I want you all to think about. If you lost who you are and the ability to love who you want to love. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Damian Thompson, Director of External Relations at Iowa Safe Schools. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. Iowa Safe Schools was founded in 2002 to represent the thousands of LGBTQ youth across the state of Iowa, and we work with hundreds every single year, just in Black Hawk County, especially in the Waterloo-Cedar Falls area. Conversion therapy, as repeated by many of the predecessors, is a widely discredited practice that doesn't work and actually causes lifelong irreparable physical and emotional trauma. Every major medical organization in the country has discredited this practice, and I was pleased to see the city of Waterloo work proactively just a few months ago to protect LGBTQ youth in the city limits from this practice. I'm going to be very blunt here and say, just since the end of the school year, we've had six students that we work with complete suicide. Part of that is due to just the general unsafe nature of our schools, but also because of the attacks of the Iowa Legislature. So the city of Waterloo taking this step to protect those kids was a real bright spot for a lot of our students that live in this area. We need to step up our support, and walking back the ordinance now of all times is not, not the way to do that. Over 100 ordinances, very similar, some identical, have been passed in municipalities across the nation, including two since Waterloo just passed theirs in May. Why the city would work to repeal this dumbfounds me. There have been zero legal or legislative developments which would change the interpretation of the passage of this ordinance. The lack of transparency from the council is also a bit disturbing, and doing this of all weeks during the week of Pride Festival here in Cedar Valley, which is one of my personal favorites and I look forward to every year, is upsetting to many of our students. Protecting youth from abuse should be a no-brainer, as many folks have said before me. This ordinance is fully legal within the concept of home rule established in the state of Iowa, and government has the right to regulate professional conduct. I also have an extensive legal brief that states quite clearly that this ordinance is not preempted, but rather is very much in compliance with state law. This ordinance has nothing, absolutely nothing to do with parental rights, as, as previously implied. I find it really remarkable, though, that there are folks in the room that are willing to go on record in favor of child abuse. We've had two other municipalities pass this ordinance with absolutely zero litigation file, and our first one was in 2020, so you would have think they would have done it by now. I urge the council to continue to support this ordinance. We have students who are protected by this ordinance. Please don't put them in danger. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So, I want to think-
That completes the public comment portion, so now we'll move to city council.
I want to thank the 286 people who have contacted me over the last 72 hours, whether it's via email or phone call. I'm sorry that I could not get to all of you. I have been dealing with the passing of my grandfather at the end of, at the beginning of this month, as well as going back to school. But out of those 286 contacts I've had in the last 72 hours, one of them asked me to repeal this ordinance. One. Now, I know some folks will say, well, some of those folks weren't from around here, because there were folks from around the state who reached out to us. I just find it a little interesting that sometimes we'll listen to out of folks, out of town folks' opinion, but not all the time. Let me be clear. This ordinance is about protecting youth, and nothing has changed in our mission to protect youth. Nothing has changed in the Constitution that declares that we should work for the common welfare. And let's be clear, conversion therapy is not for the common welfare. We all took an oath of office to protect and defend our citizens, and this ordinance does exactly that. This ordinance protects LGBTQIA+ folks from outdated, pseudo-scientific, and dangerous practices. And we sit up here and we make laws, and the point of laws is not to put words on paper or digits on a screen. The point of laws is to enact justice and fairness and equality. And until we do that, we have a lot of work to do. So it would be easy to say, oh, it's hard. It's hard to do this thing. There are people who don't like us for doing it. Justice and fairness and equality aren't ever hard because they are always the right thing to do. To my LGBTQIA+ brothers and sisters, I see you. I love you. No matter how this vote goes tonight, please know that I will walk 1,000 steps with you and then 1,000 more because your lives matter. And we cannot be truly free, we cannot be truly equal, we cannot be truly the greatest place on earth until we have all of those things. We all do better when we all do better. So I ask, I beg with my colleagues to please not repeal this ordinance, to please protect a portion of our population that is under attack. Thank you.
I just want to commend everyone that got up and spoke today. Your confidence, your bravery is inspirational. I'm going to stay the way that I've been since we started this thing. Of course, I'm going to vote no on this. I understand what the city has to do, and I understand why you're doing it. I'm just not going to do it. So I'm still going to vote no. I'm still going to stand with the gays like I always have, just, just because that's the right thing to do. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So, obviously, you know, back in May when we were discussing this, we had many conversations and lively council meetings discussing, you know, what would be the legality of this, and ultimately, which I was happy about, that we were able to pass, pass this ordinance. And so as, looking deeper into it, and obviously, we now, you know, we know that there was threatened litigation, because that was what was on the agenda item of the special session, 21.5(c) threatened litigation. We, you know, that, we had discussed the merits of that, the merits of that. When it comes down to it, what I wanted to identify for myself, what, 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 what are the charge, or what is the charge of this ordinance as it, as it stands right now? And when I break it down, essentially, if somebody were to report to the city attorney or the Human Rights Commission, the city attorney could send a letter to the person who would be practicing conversion therapy. So if somebody was affected, the city attorney could send a letter of notice that they're in violation of a city ordinance. Then beyond that, because the Human Rights Commission doesn't have any investigative authority, even with our ordinance in place, they would be referred to the Iowa Department of Health and Human Services, which houses the Board of Professional Licensor. And through that Board of Professional Licensor, the real push of this ordinance was to have a legal, have a test on that person's licensure if it would be considered within the Code of Ethics of that licensure. So further research, I looked at some of the recent rulings, for instance, by the Board of Behavioral Sciences, and in the most recent one, it said that a respondent was charged with failure to comply with the Code of Ethics for the American Counseling Association. And then if you look at the American Counseling Associations, what they think about conversion therapy, they are very clear that that is against the American Counseling Association's Code of Ethics. So the challenge with our ordinance was that we needed to make sure that the people and the youth who were affected by conversion therapy knew, or somebody who was a friend to them, who could help them, that they knew that they could report to the city attorney or the Human Rights Commission, and then that would ultimately get referred to the Board of Professional Licensor ultimately. That still stands in place without this ordinance. The only thing that would change is we wouldn't be, we wouldn't send a letter to the offender, and we also wouldn't be able to issue a municipal infraction. But because the Human Rights Commission doesn't have any investigative authority, it would have to be referred also anyway to the, ultimately, the Iowa DHS and Board of Professional Licensor. So to say that the removing of this ban takes away the initial, the main thrust of our ordinance in the first place is not completely true because we still, even if we were to, even if we do end up repealing this ban, we're still going to need for the community to know and, and I guess, publicize that if something's happening and it's the Human Rights Commission that you end up reporting to, they're going to have to refer you anyway, but that, that's going to go to all the Iowa DHS, which houses the Board of Professional Licensor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Nichols, thank you for that statement. You said it way better than I, that's my words, but you were more eloquent in how I tried to explain my position as well. And then the, having the conversation-
Time out. I'm just letting you, one more outburst like that, and we'll ask that you please remove yourself from the meeting.
Thank you. Speaking with our attorney, Mr. Peterson, if, if something like conversion therapy were happening, that could still be reported to our, our city attorney, and the same kinds of things that would, this ordinance would have done can still be put in place. We had the ability to do some things, and when this first came about, I was hesitant, and I made the motion to postpone to work with Mr. Greider to change some of the things that were, were in it originally. And he and I and Ms. Wilder sat down to have this, to try to alleviate some of the things. We went from hypothetical to realistic kinds of stuff, and, and that makes it very difficult to have this. So, Mr. Nichols, thank you for, for stating what I try, would have stated, but in a better way.
Mr. Mayor.
Any other council members? You have any comments? First.
Mr. Mayor, I want to thank everyone for the many expressions of, of love and concern that I've heard through emails and text messages. I'm very hopeful that not only will we continue to witness such caring and concern, but courage from the community as well. I mentioned last week, it's unfortunate that we can't legislate human rights and equity, access to housing and medical, quality medical care, because we're still fighting for that, even though there is legislation for it. I heard one of my colleagues say that all lives have always mattered, all lives matter, and I wanted to say that all lives have always mattered except for the lives of indigenous people, African people, Mexicans who occupied this land and was displaced and dispossessed, and now LGBTQ people. So no, I don't, I'm not, that statement kind of rubbed me the wrong way. So, yeah, you know, you know, my vote is no, but I, I just, I'm grieved, I'm grieved that we are still here in 2023.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
This whole situation is absolutely horrible. It is, it's destroying the community. It's putting us in a place when so many fantastic things are happening in, in our city that we're still being held down by, by this, and people are being held down, and people are being hurt. And when I ran for council, I remember speaking to a lot of people, and the hope that we could have in this city for a brighter future, and we're doing these things. But when it, when we originally did this in March, we were notified about this at a work session I wasn't, unfortunately, wasn't present for because I was teaching at the university, and then we had our vote, the next council meeting in which I voted yes, and voted to postpone until May because of my same- and voted to postpone until May because of my same quandaries with legality. We are a city council and we have rights afforded to us and nothing more than that. I can't make laws about anything that I want to. So I wanted to make sure this was something that could hold water, something that if we had to deal with this at a higher level, we would be fine. So we waited until May and then I am told that this new version will be able to do that. Well, as you have already been aware of, it seems, we have a credible threat of litigation for this. Therefore. Sure, call me that. But even though we have, we have a credible threat, we have a credible threat of litigation. And when I ran for council, I did not run to put us in litigation. And it's not at all, no matter what, this is a job that we serve up here that we have to follow the laws that we have been given. And I cannot put Ward One through litigation in which we are assured that we cannot prevail. There are still methods, there are still things that we can do to help and prevent this from happening. But this just, it's not one, and this is not the venue for this fight. The venue for this fight is elsewhere in this state. And there are things that we can do to support that fight, but this isn't one of them. And unfortunately, we're in an area which we can't make this, we can't do this, we cannot do this. This is horrible. I have never had chest pain in my entire life until this week because this is just horrible, there's just nothing we can do. My, my sister's gay and she's gonna probably hate me for this. But I have to do what the citizens of my ward has told me to do. I've told every citizen who's called me, everyone who's called me today. I've answered the phone and told them I went in this, with this vote. And from my ward, every constituent who's heard that has understood that, that we are not the enemy here. We are not the ones that they should be pointing their wrath towards. It's the people that prevent us from being able to do anything about it. I'm sorry, but I, I have to vote in the, with my duties of a council member.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bowden.
Thank you. I, I appreciate Mr. Greider's passion. I appreciate his, his speeches, even the ones he posts on Facebook. So if you missed it, you can go to his site and read it. But this, if it doesn't get, if it gets passed to rescind it tonight and doesn't pass to, to do another third reading, it'll be rescinded in two weeks. And if it doesn't pass in two weeks, months down the road, it's gonna be rescinded. It's out of our hands. I'm, I'm just speaking, I'm not speaking hypothetically. It's out of our hands and it's gonna be rescinded one way or the other. It's either gonna happen tonight, it's gonna happen two weeks from now, or it's gonna happen months from now. But we're gonna be forced to rescind this. And it just depends at what cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Everyone else has spoken, Mr. Greider.
It's never hard to do the right thing. And I want to be just incredibly clear that this ordinance hasn't created division. Standing up for LGBTQIA+ youth is, is not divisive regardless of what some people like to say in public or on social media. What has been divisive is the folks who have come up and called us Nazis. It's the folks who have driven by my house yelling slurs. It's the people who threatened me and my children. We heard from 11 folks who are against this repeal. Not one of them threatened us, they just asked us to protect their human rights. And we can build all the cool bridges and cool roads and open as many new stores, but if folks are being abused, none of that matters. None of that matters. And we swore an oath to protect and defend the Constitution. That means protecting and defending our constituents. So again, I am asking, please do the right thing. If someone else somewhere down the line comes and tells us to do something, that's a whole different ballgame. But we shouldn't give up just because we don't like the odds. The story of what makes the United States great is that small groups have always fought for change to make the world a better place, often against innumerable odds. And I am asking us to do this thing now because it is the right thing to do.
All right. So I, I think, you know, from three, four months ago to the point in which the council is facing this moment right now, whether to repeal, I think the biggest thing is trying to figure out the best ways to make sure that people feel included and the best ways to not just, you know, only have a ban, but also after we move from there, what other ways can an inclusive community be created? And so I would hope that whatever this conversation is right now, what happens with the repeal, that we can continue to find ways to be able to have a more supportive community so it doesn't just rest with this ordinance tonight, but that we work together to create a more inclusive community in more ways than one. And so I know council has kind of been torn, there's been, you know, threat of impending litigation moving forward. So it really puts people in a tough situation. I don't believe that the Waterloo City Council are cowards. I, I believe that they do have a decision to make tonight. And so with that said, for the motion to file, consider, pass for the second time and ordinance amending, we need to have an electronic vote right now. So, council, please state on the motion to repeal. All right, so that is four to three on the motion to repeal. Mr. Childs, Mr. Foyce, Mr. Nichols, Mr. Bowden to repeal, Ms. Wilder, Ms. Creighton Smith, and Mr. Greider to not repeal. So now we have the next up.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second to suspend the rules. So, council, could you please cash your votes? All right, so the motion to suspend has passed with one dissenting vote and it's by Ms. Creighton Smith. All right, Mr. Foyce.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the third time and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council, please cash your vote.
No.
All right, the motion to repeal passed four to three with the same members voting to repeal and the same members voting against the repeal. Thank you, council. All right, we are on number one, public hearings.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a, a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for the adoption of the 2023 Waterloo Comprehensive Land Use Plan Updates.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to comment on the, the Waterloo Comprehensive Land Use Plan?
Sir, could we wait till the council's favor is clear?
Mayor?
From public comment.
All right, we are on the public hearing for the Comprehensive Land Use Map Plan. If you have questions or comments, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record and let us know your thoughts on the Land Use Plan.
Karen Johnson, Zachary Court, Waterloo. I'm just, I just have a real question because I, I don't understand how this all works. How does someone in the general populace get to know about what's going on with planning and zoning and property moving here and there? And who determines what goes up for sale? And who determines who has an opportunity to bid on it and things like that? Is, is I could be directed to who to talk to, where to learn about all this? I and most of the city members would probably like, have, have that information available, please. Because I've looked for it and I, I, I can't find it.
Right. And then also, Noel, you can, as you take your stand, also more than welcome to attend our planning and zoning meetings. Land Use Plan, that is a group of community members that were selected to look over from different parts of the community as well. But Noel, would you comment or questions or?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So, answering the question first, a lot of the information's on the city website. There's some information on there as today for the request for proposals to sell some land. If you have questions, you can always call us at 319-291-4366. The, I think the agendas are also posted on the website. The Planning Commission meets on the second Tuesday of every month at four o'clock. They're open to the public to attend them as well and they are on the Access Studio channel. Yep. The Comprehensive Plan, I don't know if there's any specific questions to that. We're required by state code to have a comprehensive plan to have zoning. So the Comprehensive Plan goes through and discusses capital improvements, future land use, current land use, zoning, goals of the city, population trends, population projections, transportation, all, all the fun things that you'd have for community development.
Thank you. Anyone else want to comment on the Land Use Plan going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing and receive and file oral comments and the recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution adopting the 2023 Waterloo Comprehensive Land Use Plan Update.
That motion has been made with the second, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I can say from experience, because I sat in on these meetings, that a lot went into this over a long period of time. And I want to thank everybody that, that put the time in to, to put this plan together, especially in our cog.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, that's an electronic vote, please cash your votes. All right, thank you, that passed unanimously. Someone take number two, please? Anyone?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for the request by the city of Waterloo to vacate 11,250 square feet of the San Martin right-of-way in the S1 Shopping Center District located north of 2775 Crossroads Boulevard.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to comment on a motion to vacate?
David Greider, 3145 West Forest Street. Does the city own this property? I'm assuming because we got it from the Highway Commission or whatever, when it was a highway, that we do. And then, in such case, is this being given to a developer? Or is he supposed to buy it to develop on it? And then at that point, a development agreement where he gets tax abatements to pay him back for the entire purchase of the property? And that basically goes with number four, so I don't have to get back up there every time. Five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10, all the different things that, and 11, that we seem to be abandoning property, but it doesn't say what happens to the property. Does somebody get it for free? Development agreement pays them back for it? What happens with the property that we abandoned? Is it just out there for the state to mow, which they don't own it anymore? Or what happens? Thank you.
What, you said the mowing part?
No.
No, I mean a smart ass, excuse me, smart butt about that. Because if we abandon it, somebody's gotta take care of it. The state doesn't own it anymore. I'm assuming we, we had been mowing it because it's state or city-owned property. Now we're abandoning it, what's happened, what happens to it now?
All right. Mr. Anderson.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So all of the items that were noted for vacate, we do own. This particular one under item number two is a part of the transfer of jurisdiction from Highway 412 to San Martin Drive many years ago. We have going through the 306.23 process, which gives us the ability to vacate and sell it. This particular item, under Resolutions One and Two, would be conveyed to Howard Allen for the redevelopment of the Long John Silver Site for a new strip mall.
Be great, great to see some activity near Crossroads. What?
We need some retail.
What?
I said, I, I, I'm sorry, I'm out of place.
All right. Come up to the podium, she doesn't work for this. All right, any other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments and recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance approving a request by the city of Waterloo to vacate 11,250 square feet of the San Martin right-of-way in the S1 Shopping Center District located north of 2775 Crosswoods Boulevard, subject to the retention of a public utility easement over the northeasterly 30 feet of said parcel and a public utility easement over the northwesterly 10 feet of said parcel.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, council? It's electronic vote, please cash your votes. All right, thank you, that passed unanimously.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, please cash your votes. That passed unanimously, thank you, council.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second, council, please cash your votes. All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, that passed unanimously. All right, number three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and that's for the request by Brian Sizik on behalf of CNC Welding, Inc. to vacate approximately a 66-foot by 132-foot section of West 16th Street right-of-way adjacent to the 1714 River Street in the M1 Light Industrial District.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to comment on this item on the agenda? Going the second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and recommendations of approval of the Planning and Program, Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and consider and pass for the first time an ordinance approving a request by Brian Sizik on behalf of CNC Welding, Inc. to vacate approximately a 66-foot by 132-foot section of West 16th Street right-of-way adjacent to 1714 River Street, subject to the retention of access easements and utility easements over portions of the vacate area.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, council questions? All right, this is an electronic vote, please cash your vote. All right, that passed unanimously.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, please, electronic vote. All right, that passed unanimously. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Please, counsel, cash your votes. That passed unanimously. Thank you. Number four, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, proof of publication of a public hearing and a request by the City of Waterloo to vacate 157,048 square feet of West Airline Highway from 3469 West Airline Highway to 2950 Geraldine Road, with the exception of 21,105 square feet section of city-owned right-of-way at 3469 West Airline Highway that was previously vacated, located in the M1 Light Industrial District.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Did you just read that you opened the motion received and file proof of publication notice of hearing?
Yeah, I'm a...
I'm sorry. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna switch back here.
Just, yeah, just...
You know what? I didn't catch that part, the smaller print. Previously vacated, subject to the retention of the drainage easement and utility easement over and under, upon, and across the entire vacated area.
Wait, only thing we need to do on that one is just add...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Add that public hearing notice. Assume you made that motion.
I did.
And we got a second. So the hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item on the agenda going a second time? Now we need to close the hearing. Mr. Boza?
Oh, oh, excuse me. Motion to, okay, motion to, motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and the recommendation of approval of Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion received, filed, and consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance approving the request by the City of Waterloo to vacate 157,048 square feet of West Airline Highway from 3469 West Airline Highway to 2950 Geraldine Road, with the exception of 21,105 square feet of city-owned right-of-way at 3469 West Airline Highway that was previously vacated, subject to the retention of a drainage easement and utility easement over, under, upon, and across the entire vacated area.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions? It's an electronic vote. That passed unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second. Counsel? Passed unanimously. Thank you. Sorry about that.
No, motion considering, pass for a second and third time and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, electronic vote. That passed unanimously. Thank you, counsel. Number five, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the request by Three Stooges LLC for a site plan amendment for a new 8,980-square-foot commercial building in the M-2P Planned Industrial District located south of 4050 Levercy Road.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda?
Mayor, council members, Forrest Dilavu, 1725 Huntington Road. I would like to speak about five, six, seven, and eight. These are all with the same developer. When we make development agreements, they're constantly coming back for change, as well as they do not meet the deadlines that are set in the agreement. When they do not meet a deadline, that means the money's coming to the taxpayers is pushed out years. As we see development agreements, they say we have our funding, and the funding doesn't come through, so we give them more time and more time and more time, and we constantly change the agreements. We need to do something for the citizens. We need to hold them to a development time. Because when we put our money out, buy these properties, give them to them, we pay interest on that money from day one. We've got buildings across the river. Fifteen years ago, we purchased that. We've been paying fifteen years on that, paying interest on the loans. We need them to be held to the development agreement or pay a fine or fee or something back to help cover our losses. Thank you kindly.
Thank you.
David Dryer, 3145 West Forest Street. In relationship to those that Forrest has spoken about, I would like to see if I can get some sort of idea, record, written statement of what, in a development agreement, and the percentages of the rebate that we give them back, how much money are we investing in that property that we don't get a share of, but yet we have a lot of money invested in it? We go do business with whatever they build there. So they make the money, and we suffer part of the building costs, et cetera. How much of that do we pay back after they... Fine, they've got a $500,000 agreement on one of these, I saw. But at the same time, we've given them how much money towards that $500,000 that we don't see any recoup out of for five, 10, some cases, 20 years for tax back, but we never catch up. And it's probably a lot of the stuff that's in the TIF district that we never get the money out of it anyway for the relief on the private citizen. So if I could get someone in the offices to email me, and I think most of you have my email, about those facts of how much do we actually invest in these properties that we... It takes five, 10, 20 years for us to get anything back out of it. How much of that do we get back? Thank you.
Noel, how much do you have? How much are you have invested in this? And how much money are we currently earning off of this site?
Noel Anderson, committee planning and development director. There was a lot of questions in there.
I just streamlined the question.
These particular sites, I mean, the Falls Avenue one was a site given to us by the Waterloo School District as part of a property exchange, so it probably cost us a dollar.
So how much, how much do we, like, $1?
$1 on that one. The airport area, the Levercy one, is in the midport TIF. We probably, we'd have to go back and look. I think we bought a lot of the land there with the TIF cash, so there's no interest bearing on that. The purpose of the TIF district is to create cash in the TIF district to do more development, which is what we're doing with these projects. And actually, with the Levercy Road one, we actually split two larger lots to create this third lot to get more development out there. As far as I'm aware, I'll go back and check, Three Stooges has always made the timelines for their development agreements, so we don't have too many concerns with them being able to do that.
$1.
That was, that was two of them.
All right.
The CNC welding one, which is item number 10, is a development agreement. That's the 16th Street vacate we just did. You know, one of the things we look at with all these vacates is we talk to all the city departments to find out if there's a need for this to continue to be city right-of-way when there's not a public need for it anymore. We vacated to turn it into land, put it on the tax rolls, and get development to occur on that. That was an original plat of Waterloo, so that would have cost us actually $0 as part of the plating process. The number nine, A&amp;K Venture site plan, we just did some actions on that, I think about a month ago, where we did buy that land. This is the second project going on that same lot that we acquired. I can definitely send some numbers to the mayor, council, and Mr. Dryer if he'd like to see the, how the numbers work on us buying these and then seeing the development come in.
So in some instances, you're taking property that's not earning any tax dollars and turning it into a taxable, you know, they're turning it into a taxable property, and that new growth stays within that district to continue to do more projects, more infrastructure, continue to pay towards our debt levy, continues to use water, continues to use electricity, continues, maybe one day, fiber and all those things as well. So this does have some ability to be able to generate something back to the community.
That, that's entirely correct. I don't, I don't know that we've had any TIF district improvements in the CIP for a number of years now, so we can prioritize that money for the other city departments because we've been utilizing the TIF cash, so it's, it's just a smart financial tool.
Thank you. All right, anyone else with regards to the public hearing going a second time? Somebody want to... Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance amendment to ordinance number 5079 as amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10-4-4, approving a request by Three Stooges LLC for a site plan amendment for a new 8,980-square-foot commercial building in the M-2P Planned Industrial District located south of 4050 Levercy Road.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, one more. Did you have any question?
No.
Okay. All right, counsel, any questions? Please cash your votes.
Mr. Boza, how do you vote?
I did vote.
How do you vote?
Yes.
All right, thank you. That passed unanimously.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second. Counsel, please cash your votes. All right, that passed unanimously. Just to suspend the rules.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, please cash your vote, please. All right, that passed unanimously. Could someone take number six, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, proof of publication, notice of public hearing, and a request by Three Stooges LLC for a site plan amendment for two new 4,800 square-foot commercial buildings in the CP Planned Commercial District located north of 2117 Falls Avenue.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to, to close the public hearing and receive file oral and written comments and the recommendation of approval of Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion received, filed, and consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance amendment to the ordinance number 5079 as amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referenced in section 10-4-4, approving the request by Three Stooges LLC for a site plan amendment for two new commercial buildings in the CP Planned Commercial District located north of 2117 Falls Avenue.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions? Anything? All right, please cash your votes. All right, that passed unanimously for the first...
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second. Please cash your votes. All right, that passed unanimously.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, please cash your vote for the second and third times. All right, thank you. That passed unanimously. Could someone take number seven?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing, and that's for the sale and conveyance of city-owned property in the amount of $1 to Three Stooges LLC for the construction of a 9,000-square-foot commercial building with a minimum assessed value of $350,000, including a development and minimum assess, assessment agreement with a tax rebate scheduled to five years at 50% located south of 130 Hyperdrive.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to talk about this development going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located south of 130 Hyperdrive to Three Stooges LLC in the amount of $1 and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions, comments? Please cash your vote. All right, that passed unanimously. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a development and minimum assessment agreement with Three Stooges LLC for the construction of a new 9,000-square-foot commercial building with a minimum assessed value of $350,000 and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Once again, counsel, questions? All right, if you will, please cash your votes.
Passed.
All right, that passed unanimously. Could someone take number eight for us?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, proof of publication, notice of public hearing, sale and conveyance of city-owned property located at 2200 Falls Avenue in the amount of $1, and approve a development agreement with Three Stooges LLC with a minimum assessment agreement of $500,000 for the construction of two 4,800-square-foot commercial buildings.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to comment on this particular item going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to, to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located east of 2200 Falls Avenue to Three Stooges LLC in the amount of $1 and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions? Please cash your electronic vote. All right, that passed unanimously.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Adopting a resolution approving the development agreement, minimum assessment agreement with Three Stooges LLC for the construction of two 4,800-square-foot commercial commercial buildings with a minimum assessed value of five hundred thousand dollars and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Uh, if no questions, council, uh, please cast your votes. All right, they pass unanimously, number eight. Could someone take number nine, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the request by ANK Venture for a site plan amendment for a new six thousand six hundred and eighteen square foot commercial building and future six thousand square foot addition located in the B dash P Business Park district located north of thirty one fifty one Titan Trail.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak towards the site plan amendment? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close public hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion has been made, uh, with the second. Um, council, uh, wait. Yeah, council, all in favor?
Aye.
Votes. All right, hearing closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider and pass for the first time an ordinance amendment to ordinance number fifty seventy nine as amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section ten dash four dash four, approving the request by ANK Venture for a site plan amendment for a new six thousand six hundred and eighteen square foot commercial building and a future six thousand square foot addition located in the B dash P Business Park district located north of thirty one fifty one Titan Trail.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council, questions, comments? All right, please cast your votes. All right, that was approved.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Council, please cast your vote. Is that better, pace for you?
Yeah.
Kind of putting you out of sleep, huh? All right, that passed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir?
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council, please cast your vote. They pass unanimously. Let's go to, uh, number ten.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, proof of publication notice of public hearing and the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located at seventeen fourteen River Street in the amount of one dollar to CNC Welding and approving the development agreement a minimum assessment of five hundred fifty thousand dollars for the construction of a ten thousand square foot industrial building.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Uh, the public hearing is open. Is there anyone that would like to comment on this particular item on the agenda? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd adopt a resolution approving the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located near seventeen fourteen River Street in the amount of one dollar to CNC Welding, Inc. and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council, questions? Madam Clerk, please, uh, cast your vote. Votes, council, not clerk. All right, passing.
Yes, sir?
I'd adopt a resolution approving the development agreement, minimum assessment agreement with CNC Welding, Inc. for the construction of a new ten thousand square foot industrial building with a minimum assessment value of five hundred fifty thousand dollars and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the, with the second. That was, that was, uh,
That was quick.
That was, uh, one point eight. All right, so, uh, council, please cast your votes. All right, that passed unanimously. Number eleven, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for a request by Howard Allen on behalf of Grant Park LLC for a site plan amendment for a new retail center in the S dash one Shopping Center District located at two seven seven five Crossroads Boulevard.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this development? Going a second time? Yes, ma'am.
Beverly Cosby, three fifteen Window Court. Um, you said this is gonna be a retail? Um, where did I see, retail or something? But anyway, retail, what kind of shops are, do you know what kind of shops are gonna be going in there, or?
I'm not sure.
Is it anything to bring more revenue to Waterloo?
All the, yeah, it, it would be some sort of taxable, taxable property.
But nothing like Dillers or Yonkers or anything like that?
Not yet, not yet.
Not on that, not on that, not on that scale?
To be continued. So, yeah, we'll have, sorry, I'm not cutting you off.
No, that's fine.
But, uh, we'll have future meetings about, about that portion, and then that is part of our strategic goal for our twenty thirty vision plan, so there'll be more information forthcoming over the course of the next couple of months about conversation about the entire crossroads portion of redevelopment and the surrounding area, visioning and all those things as well. So that's to come, but we got one issue, couple issues at a time.
That's good, because, um, um, people are steady asking, where can I go buy a decent pair of shoes or a new dress without having to go to see the Falls or Iowa City? When is, when is Waterloo gonna come back?
Right, right. Yeah, and you know, the interesting part, and I can't deviate too far off what's on here, uh, trends, you know, uh, what was it, in the seventies or eighties when the mall was built? Everyone went there and then downtown struggled. Now downtown is being revived, and all the mall area seems to be doing, you know, somewhat all right from Best Buy to the surrounding areas, but the actual shell of the crossroads, like you indicated, uh, is in a, uh, challenging spot right now. Um, I can't deviate too far from here, which I probably already did, but it says Crossroads Shopping Center District. With regards to the district, uh, Noel and I have had conversations with the owners, uh, and, you know, hopefully, within the next couple of months, we'll bring something to the city council one way or another, uh, with regards to shop, the shopping center district. Uh, so, thank you. Um, any other questions about, uh, number eleven? Uh, all in favor, uh, to, motion, can we get a motion to close?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close public hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider and pass for the first time an ordinance amendment to the ordinance number five zero seven nine as amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section ten dash four dash four, approving our request by Howard Allen on behalf of Grant Park LLC for a site plan amendment for a new retail center in the S dash one Shopping Center District located at two seven seven five Crossroads Boulevard.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Council, questions? All right, please cast your votes. All right, thank you, that passed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Council, please cast your votes. All right, that passed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I would like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the said ordinance.
Second.
That motion has been made with two seconds. Um, could you please cast your vote for the second and third, uh, readings, or? All right, that passed unanimously. Could someone take, uh, uh, one through three?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt the following resolutions. The first is a resolution approving the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located north of twenty seven seventy five Crossroads Boulevard to Grant Park LLC in the amount of one dollar and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Number two is a resolution approving a development, uh, and minimum assessment agreement with Grant Park LLC for the construction of a new ten thousand square foot commercial building with a minimum assessed value of two point two million dollars with the rebate schedule of eighty percent for years one through five and seventy percent for years six through ten and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number three, a resolution approving an amendment to a purchase agreement with Aline Ventures LLC originally executed July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, pertaining to the purchase of a property located at two hundred East Mullen Avenue to allow for, to allow a phase two environmental assessment to investigate environmental conditions and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone that have questions about these items one, two and three under resolutions? Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
On number one, if Noel could tell us what the value of the land that we're vacating that we're giving to this development for a dollar?
Mr. Anderson?
Noel Anderson, Committee of Planning Development Director. Um, we did have to go through the three oh six point two three process for this, so we did have it appraised, it appraised at a hundred and twenty-four thousand.
Thank you. So we're gonna, we're gonna, we're giving a hundred and twenty-four thousand plus, on number two, tax rebates of basically seventy-five percent for ten years plus a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars worth of land.
One note under the tax rebate, so that is above the base value, which I think is at nine hundred and fifty thousand or something like that, so it's really not as much as it looks like for the two point two million. So it's just above that. The base value will continue to pay to the general fund like it did before the Tiff was initiated.
And I did, we did talk about that at the last meeting, that we will be sitting, getting some tax value out of this.
Correct.
And then on number three, didn't that used to be a, didn't it, was there a gas station on that corner at one time?
Yes, there was.
So, on the development agreement, we are accepting all liability to, if there, if we find hazards in this ground?
That is correct. We've done a phase one, um, that's identified the potential of two smaller tanks. Um, these tanks would have been there before the DNR registered them. Um, but we think it's a pretty small risk to be able to acquire the land. We are acquiring the site for seven thousand dollars, so it's a pretty small amount. Um, and then there is also state funds available for, um, underground storage tank removal if we need to.
Okay, so we, it's not like we're gonna be on the hook if, completely on the hook if, if these tanks have been leaking for years?
I mean, we, we are accepting environmental responsibility. We just don't think there's much risk in there and based on the size of the tanks from the ground penetrating radar and all that, that we've done in recent areas.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Uh, please cast your votes. One, two, three, one, two and three, please. And if there's one you object with, please, uh, let us know. All right, those three pass unanimously. Um,
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to, motion that we adopt a resolution approving Young Arena ice rental rates scheduled for the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four seasons. I'd like to ask that we adopt a resolution approving supplemental agreement number eight to a professional services agreement with Wang, Claus and Engineering and Surveying, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, originally executed October tenth, two thousand sixteen, in an amount not to exceed six thousand dollars in conjunction with the fiscal year two thousand seventeen Hammond Avenue Bridge replacement over Sink Creek Project, contract number nine two two two, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And then I'd like to ask that we adopt a resolution approving a collateral assignment of infrastructure development agreement between the City of Waterloo and Farmer State Bank related to the development of North Crossing located at the northeast corner of East Donald Street and Logan Avenue, Highway sixty-three.
Second.
All right, that motion has been made, uh, with the second. I'm pretty sure, Jamie, this is, uh, number five is a, a bridge to being able to sleep a little bit easier, uh, at some point.
Couple years from now.
Yeah. Tell me about it. Um, any, anyone, anyone from the audience with questions or counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
If, if Mr. Anderson could just address number six, 'cause I've received a couple of calls and, and just so that, that the people out there know that, that the way it's written, it says in case of default or stoppage of the job, that the job's not stopping, you know? I mean, can you just explain what this is?
Noel Anderson, Committee of Planning Development Director. So, yeah, this is the bank basically asking to be in first position, uh, wanting to make sure that they are, are, are in first place and they're providing the money for it. Um, the agreement will note that if work were to actually stop out there, that the city's reimbursement payments would stop as well. Um, and obviously, if you've been out there to see the site, uh, they're going pretty full force out there, so we're not too concerned about this. It's more just of a financial step that the banks take.
Thank you, sir.
Was this similar to the one before for another development when all heck broke loose? And pretty standard portion of the line of?
I'm trying to think. There's another name for these. It's not normally this one. It's a, uh, uh, where they take a second place one that, we, we've done quite a few of these over the years.
Right, all right. Um, four, five and six, council questions? Please cast your votes, uh. All right, passing unanimously. Could someone take seven and eight, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Um, Mr. Wilder?
All right, thanks. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the following resolutions. Number seven, a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the Iowa Department of Revenue for continued participation in the state income offset program and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. And number eight, a resolution approving a letter of intent with Trillium Transportation Fuels LLC of Houston, Texas for the design, construction and operation of renewable natural gas projects at the city's wastewater treatment plant and?
That's it. Oh, where's the Trillium plant? There's no more, unless you got another number in there. I don't see.
There's, there was more words.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Do you wanna read them?
No, ma'am. I'm, I'm, did that, been there, done that. Anorobic.
Thanks. Um, and Anorobic Lagoon and authorizing the mayor to execute said document now.
Second.
The second. See, that's when you, it's an Anorobic Lagoon, and then you know where you kind of breeze through it a little bit and then say it. Um, any questions on this item? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir?
On number eight, I was very happy, um, to work with Mr. Bennett and a whole group on, on getting this project done, um, because it turns out that we can do multiple things at the same time. What this project will do is it will capture the natural gas that is emitted from our wastewater treatment facility in our Anorobic Lagoon, which you know is impacting climate change, which we're all living through right now. Um, so that's one win. The other way that this is a win is that we will be able to sell that natural gas onto the marketplace for natural gas, of which there is a sizable amount, uh, and this will generate revenue for the City of Waterloo, which is another win. Uh, and the third win is that hopefully this money will go to maintain our wastewater treatment facility in Anorobic Lagoon, um, which we will need to, as we've talked about, um, be expanded, be updated and be taken care of. And by using these funds, we will not have to slip into CIP or other bond money, and that is a third win. Um, so while we are doing the right thing, we are also doing the financially responsible thing, uh, and we are doing it in a way, uh, that will showcase that Waterloo is moving towards the future. And I was very, very proud, uh, to be on the committee to make this work, and I'm very, very excited to see it move forward.
So, um, just, okay.
Just, just for clarification, then with Mr. Bennett, this is a letter of intent. So we've got X amount of months to work out the contractual details to fit, to meet both of our needs, and if not, we go back to the drawing board.
Right, uh, which is yes, but what I'll say, this is a, a huge step in the right direction. We've been looking at this for a number of years. Um, we've even taken a look at how we can restructure the department and have a, uh, director, assistant director, that's looking over, uh, our ability to take a look at, uh, renewable fuels, so that person, uh, is there as well. Um, the, just for clarification, um, the comment about CIP and where that money come, are you no longer, during that committee, you guys are no longer, you would never request CIP again? Or I'm confused on that portion?
Did you say yes?
That's a, that's a Texas size. Yes.
Uh, Rainey Bennett Public, Rainey Bennett Public Works Division Manager. Um, we'll still be moving forward as far as, um, requesting some funds, but, um, once the letter intent and we get everything ironed out, um, the long-term goal, just like what Mr. Grider said, is hopefully we'll be getting some, um, income from this that can hopefully, um, offset that. Um, we'll still have some debt that's going to it, but, um, you, you know, not only environmentally, but also the cost sharing.
I know Noel, love to hear that.
Yeah, don't wanna get him too excited yet.
And then just, just one, one good note with regard, with regards to, uh, the treatment plant, since we're on that subject, I just wanna give, uh, an incredible shout out to everyone within that department. Um, as folks know, we've, have faced a consent decree, uh, what I inherited, what we inherited, and from that point, there's been close to about a hundred million dollars uh, spent within our, uh, treatment plant to correct and upgrade, uh, our system. So this is part of that project, and I think this is an incredible testament to the hard work and efforts of, uh, your team to get us to that point. And I believe now, or sometime soon, we will have, what do you call it, our comment period, I believe?
Um, so, yeah, just to kind of give an update on that. So, um, part of the consent decree to be able to get out of that, we have a demonstration period. So, um, with a lot of the improvements for what we're doing, um, we're, um, petitioned the, the EPA to go ahead and start that, and we got the, granted the approval to do that. So we have a one-year period to start demonstrating, um, that we have no SSOs.
Right.
Now, I do wanna be very clear, um, even though, you know, hopefully we're able to get out from underneath the consent decree, we still have a lot of allegations for which we stated that we were going to do, which we would still be obligated to do, um, but just hopefully to, to actually get that, um, that portion removed, at least ways, the enforcement side of it.
And, and I mention that because, um, people really don't understand the amount of pressure that the department has been under, office, council and mayor's office has been under. And regardless of what people said, what people tried to create, that what we're doing or not doing, uh, we've stayed the course and we got us to this point, so I wanna make sure, uh, that I celebrate, uh, your department's hard work, uh, to moving forward, uh, even when the odds were stacked against us a little bit. So appreciate it.
Yep, we appreciate that.
Any other questions? All right, please, uh, seven and eight. All right, that passed unanimously. Number one, please. Ordinances.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider and pass for the second time an ordinance amending the City of Waterloo Tropic Ode by Rupee Ling, subsection forty-six, Martin Luther King Jr. Drive of Section five four one, increasing speed limits in certain areas in its entirety and inserting in lieu of thereof a new subsection forty-six Martin Luther King Drive of Section five four one, increasing speed limits in certain areas.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Uh, any comments about this item? We had it a couple of weeks ago. Yes, ma'am.
Beverly Cosby, um, three fifteen Window Court. I was one of the people that really objected to the, the fact that they were going to increase the speeding, the speed limit on Martin Luther King Drive. I drove that area this last past week. People are already going seventy, sixty-five, seventy miles an hour. If we, i- is, and if we increase it to, I think it was forty-five, uh, miles an hour, they're gonna, they're gonna go seventy. You increase it to fifty-five, they're gonna go, they're gonna go seventy. You increase it to fifty-five, they're gonna go, they're gonna go seventy-five. I think overall, we're creating a hazard of potential, um, accidents out there. Um, there's a, there's a corner there on the corner of Mobile and Martin Luther King Drive. If people are speeding, I have a distinct fear that somebody's gonna go off that, that hill and down, down the hill into somebody's yard. If we leave this, the speed, people are already speeding out there anyway. So if we leave the speed limits as they are, and just put a little bit more control out there, um, as somebody had mentioned that, uh, what is that thing you have that you can control the, the traffic with? But anyway, I'm just saying, overall, we should leave the tra, the speed limits as they are because I think we're only creating more hazards by increasing it. Um, as you get further out towards Tysons and that way, they really speed. Um, and it, I think it'd be just more potentially dangerous.
All right, thank you. All right, counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
That's my walking trail. Um, and I have walked past a sign that almost, um, someone hit it, and it was nearly, um, covering the sidewalk. I'm concerned.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. And then we'll have, uh, um...
Mohammed.
That's what I just said this time. I said it on here this time. Mr. Mr., Charles?
Um, I, I was just gonna echo actually what Mohammed said last week, that speed limit signs don't affect speed. Uh, so it's, yeah, he can go on up and talk about that, so.
Mohammed Alahi, uh, Traffic Operations Department. We're just changing the speed limit on a small portion of MLK. The entire thing will stay the same, except three hundred feet past Mobile Street towards Linden. Just from there, about seven hundred feet to Linden. That's all we're changing. The thirty mile per hour will stay the same, thirty-five miles per hour will stay the same, and the forty-five miles per hour will stay the same. Just that portion from east of, what, three hundred feet east of Mobile towards Linden? From there to Linden, only that portion is gonna be forty-five miles per hour.
Mr. Mayor. While he's up there.
Yeah, are you finished?
Yes.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
What is the, what is the traffic score for that area right now?
The traffic, uh, we, we counted the speed limit. We got, we counted the speeds, and the eighty-fifth percentile of speed is fifty miles per hour. In that, the, the portions were changing.
So if you do, like, if we do pass this today and you do some sort of testing and our score somehow changes, are we able to then go back and revisit the speed limit?
Yes, we are, but I, I don't expect that to increase. Give you an example. University Avenue was eighty-fifth percentile of speed limit was fifty miles, a little bit over fifty miles per hour. We changed it from six lanes to four lanes. Speed limit is still forty-five miles per hour, but eighty-fifth percentile is now forty-five miles per hour. That means people go, eighty-five percent of the people go where it's at the speed that's safe to go.
Okay. Thank you, Director, and congratulations.
Anyone else? I had a quick question. Is there, I know this speaking, okay, I guess I can't ask that now about, is there anything that we can do to beautify MLK like we did, uh, University Avenue? But we can't talk about that right now, so don't worry about it. Thinking of, you know. All right, um, counsel, anyone else? Thank you, Mohammed. Uh, please, uh, cast your votes. All right, we have six yays and, uh, one no vote by Councilwoman Creighton Smith.
Mr. Mayor, make a, make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Please cast your votes. All right, the suspension passed with one no vote.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the third, third time and adopt said ordinance.
Been made with the second. All right, counsel, please cast your votes. All right, that passed again, uh, six to one, again. All right, yes, sir.
I would like to adopt the following resolutions under one motion. A resolution approving the proposed construction of sidewalk improvements, a resolution to fix value of the lots, a resolution to adopt proposed plan and schedule of assessments and estimated costs, and a resolution of necessity and set in the date of public hearing in September eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, public, any comments? All right, uh, please cast your votes. All right, that passed unanimously. Thank you. Motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.